This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the March 3, 2025 regular council meeting to order at 6:30 PM. All right, pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Not when anyone would like to make a motion?
We accept the agenda as written.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Wagner, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mayor's report. Well, I have kind of a special little presentation recognition award tonight. And I was hoping Mike Grant was going to be here tonight. Hopefully he'll make it, so. I met Mike Grant about six years ago when he helped us trim the entrance to the Vernoni Lake, Mel Pond if you will. And he did all that work with his chipper and little mini excavator and all volunteer and did a great job helping out. And he's also, over the last six years, trimmed every tree in every park we have. Well, not every tree, but he's worked good tree care in every park we have. In the pork park, he took down a big maple that needed to come down, and that was a big job. Of course Hawkins Park by the Dewey Pool there, he took one or two trees out there that were dying and dead. And the last tree he trimmed for the city of Vernoni was, he climbed 180 feet up in Aura Beaumire Park and took down a big red fir. And the one tree I want to recognize, Mike, and I made a little, got a little plaque made for him. This is a walnut tree in Spencer Park. He managed to save that tree and a couple of years ago and did a lot of great work. And took out another dead tree next to Myers' autobody, which needed to come down. And he gave us a break on all of them, but anyway. His health has failed in the last couple of years, and so he's not able to work anymore. But I just wanted to recognize him, and we're going to put this on the walnut tree. Appreciation for the skills of Arborist Mike Grant, the city of Vernoni says thank you, Mike. So, anyway. Yeah. So are there any presentations? Okay. Council committee meeting reports. No. Dale, go ahead.
Public Works Committee, May 25. Kind of finished up some of their old business. I think they got the pedestrian plans ready to become the council. I think they gave their final blessing on it. I know we kind of pitched towards them, the funding future paving projects, grants and funding options. But they're kind of feeling now that that's kind of being partially resolved and they're not. They just, they didn't think they needed to go any.
Yeah, she had talked, they submitted the list that they came up with.
Yeah.
And then with the funding sources and the guidance for other types of projects should they qualify. Yeah, I said.
The council's going to have a workshop on our philosophy.
Yes, so I said, I think it's good for now.
Yeah. And then they're working on articles for the newspaper. And they just, yeah, they had the list of the things, articles to go in. They had a string of them, so that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Dale. Okay. Topics on the floor. No? Consent agenda for acceptance, Public Works Committee Minutes for November 2024, Public Committee Minutes for November 2024. Public Works Committee Meeting Minutes, boy, say that 10 times. January 2025. Library Board Meeting Minutes for January 25. Any discussion on all their questions?
I move to approve the consent agenda for acceptance as listed.
So moved. Second?
No, second.
Seconded by Council Weller, all of the favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Consent agenda for approval, City Council Meeting Minutes for January 13, 2025, City Council Meeting Minutes for February 3, 2025, City Council Meeting Minutes for February 19, 2025, and the last City Council Meeting Minutes for February 24, 2025.
I move to approve the consent agenda for approval as listed.
So moved. Seconded by Council Webb, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Sounds like Mike coming in. Hi, Mike. I just spoke very highly of you in my mayor's report, but glad you could make it tonight. And I want to thank you for all the, all the work that, that you've done for the city over the last six years, all your expert tree work and, and your dedication and your, your volunteer time, and it meant a lot to us. And I just wanted to thank you again, Mike. I have a nice plaque here and appreciation for the skills of Arborist Mike Grant. City of Vernoni says thank you, Mike. And I also like to thank Michelle, Mike's wife. They have a really nice nursery out on where they live. And she's, they both donated lots of nice plants to the senior center, all their landscaping and so, and chips, and thank you so much, so. Thank you. There you go. We'll put it on the walnut tree for you. Ready, one, two, three. Be one more. Thank you. Right, actually just got a close up.
You can make him send them to you, too.
Go ahead, make him stand there longer, Michelle.
Good job.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Yes.
Okay, any unfinished business? New business, library. We have three applications for two different committees tonight. And the first one is on the library board. Gail Lee could be found on page 13.
The library board did recommend her, they just didn't submit as written recommendation. But Brandy's relearning the duties of secretary, so I'm cutting her a little bit of slack on that one.
Okay. So any discussions on the application for Gail? Questions? If I have a general consensus by the council, I'll point her.
Yes, please.
Prove her. Oh, good. Well, it's my honor to approve Gail Lee to the library board. Congratulations, Gail. We also have two other applicants for parks. JR Allen and Tony Hyde. Those applicants are here, too. They have, they have been approved and, yeah, by the Parks Committee just recently, so. Any discussion or questions on these two applicants? General consensus from council?
Approved.
Okay, it's my honor to appoint JR Allen and Tony Hyde to the Parks Committee. Congratulations, guys. Almost a full committee anymore, so that's good. Okay, Parks Committee recommendations, new tee ball field. Page 17 through 22. Everybody see where the perspective little field is for the little ones? Kind of a good area there, I think, anyway. Any questions? Looks like they want to get started on it pretty quick. March sometime.
They're permitting.
Right.
No.
They still going to use Hawkins Park? Does anybody know?
They plan to, but Hawkins in certain weather is just too swampy and the trees back there. So this will be, most of the tee ball, they'll do Hawkins, but this would be an extra field if they need them. Oh, today we're playing at Spencer, guys.
Okay.
The other thing they want to do is get into hosting like an invitational as a fundraiser for boosters. We, as booster parents, attend a lot of other towns tournaments, and they make money off those. And Vernoni wants to have the ability to host one with, with four, four fields that could house bigger players. You need two on this and then the two old high school ones, they could support a tournament in the future.
Looks very good to me.
Yeah. How much, how much dirt work do you think is?
They don't do very much because really, other than getting the sod off for the dirt infield, they're trying to leave as much grass as they can. So just the dugout and area behind and then the infield will be dirt work. And they did ask if the city could look for a little bit of funds to help with rock and potentially maybe help with a load of turfis, which is the finished material. It's not dirt, it's like engineered dirt for the infield. And so I said, get me the specifications and I'll look to see if we have the funds available to participate, which we have participated in every installation boosters has done. The skinny, that's skinny, the city has participated because it is our park that the public uses. So we think it's right to participate. Just not in the full budget because I can't afford what they're doing. I can only help with rock. The Parks Committee did hear this proposal by their representatives and approved it. That's what's on page 17.
So if there's, is there, first of all, is there any more discussion or questions for staff? Would anyone like to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion if we approve the proposal for the Brownie Booster Club to put in new ball field.
I'll second.
So moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carried. Very good.
We don't roll call motions?
We'll have to listen to ordinance.
Say any opposed?
No. All right, thank you, yeah, I don't think anybody was.
Oh, okay.
We'll roll call.
Okay.
They only wrote call on an ordinance, Dale.
Only on ordinance?
Yep.
We really only started roll call during COVID. And that's when I started calling it because I could see everybody. And that way you guys weren't all just talking over each other because it was confusing. Now we're in person, we can get away from that.
My job.
Do it again. Yeah.
My job.
Make it quicker.
So, wow, moving right into Vernoni, please.
So as you guys can see, I've got January and February stats. Starting the new year off, pretty consistent. January was 238 calls for service. Last month was 219, probably 238 if we had the extra two or three days, you know? So a couple of key points that are staying pretty consistent is the premise checks and the traffic stops, so.
Yep.
Any questions?
I do notice that we no longer have marine patrol on the list and have replaced it with menacing in progress.
No.
So disappointed.
So we used to have marine patrol on here?
Yeah.
We don't have a marine patrol.
I know that, but it's on, it's been on the report every year, that, every month, so I'm, I'm.
Eva must have caught that.
Things are going pretty good?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Yep, things are moving right along.
Good.
Staying pretty consistent and being where we can be because presence is everything, so.
Yep.
I have a real question.
Go ahead.
So, premise check, is that requested premise checks or you drive by and see something?
Self-initiated, yes.
So, like?
Like, if I'm driving, if I'm driving around, yeah. I'm in church, do a premise check. Got school, do a premise check, the lake, the parks. Businesses.
People can request them, too, right?
Can request them, yes.
That's right, yeah. Remember when we first moved here? We didn't know it an awesome place this time, so. Yeah, thank you, I just want clarification.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
You.
Correspondences and resolutions. Correspondence. Staff report, SCI filing.
This is, there's no action required for this one, it's just a heads up. You guys should be getting emails if you haven't already initiating you to file your statement of economic interest.
I haven't received one yet, but I'm looking.
I haven't either.
Yeah. It's usually before the 15th, right?
Oh, come in, please.
Before the 15th, sometime in March, yeah, send the emails.
Yeah.
I can't remember what.
I'd say any day now, but.
Yeah. You'll know when you get it.
For Dennis, it hasn't done it before. If you have any questions, just talk to Stephanie, she'll help you with it.
Yeah, if we hadn't already.
Yeah. I know she, she helped me the first time, my first term, helped me a lot. It's pretty easy, actually, but. So, okay, I have some more correspondence. Council Norman and I attended a workshop, town hall meeting last Saturday. Senator Jeff Merkley's town hall, and Klaska and I, I saw Scott there. Good turnout, we, we had a leaders meeting prior to the town hall at 4:30 in one of the classrooms. And both myself and Donald were there, of course, and Mayor Bob hosted, of course, hosted the event. He was there, Mayor from Scapus was there, a couple of other people. So that was the, the day after we found out that possibly a 20% match from ODOT for our project on, that we had a workshop on in the State Avenue Restoration Project. So we went anyway, and I just listened and I asked him a couple of questions. And there at the end of the meeting, I thanked Senator for, for being there and meeting with us. And Gustavo was sitting right next to him. I, I took the opportunity to thank Gustavo because he was really helpful. And after Donald and I met him at the county city dinner in St. Elens last month. And he was really helpful in trying to help us get federal funds. So they said, well, keep in touch, Rick, and we'll see what could do maybe for next year. So it was a really positive note that, that I think, you know, Donald and I left there, leaving them with. And so Friday night, I got a telephone call about 6 o'clock, and it was Gustavo. And he said, hey, Rick, I talked to ODOT today, and we think that you only require a 10% match on, on that funding. So, so Josette and I, and she's going to talk about this here shortly in her report. So I just wanted to let everyone know what we're doing and what we're trying to do for additional funds. We also met a representative from Darcy Edwards' office, Sam, can't remember his last name. He actually approached me after the meeting and said, Rick, I think the state may be able to help you. So the next day I called his office and he sent an application over. I forwarded it to Josette, so we've applied for state funding for this project. So with our fingers crossed, with the two, we might be able to pull something off next year. So we'll see, but anyway, I'll turn it over to Josette now.
That's okay. So I'll just start with that one. So I did talk to Gustavo around 4:50 this evening. There was a lot of discrepancy between the Senator and ODOT and the state representatives for ODOT. So they basically, I called Gustavo and said, I sat on a Zoom meeting where two ODOT people were looking at me, and they said, it's 20%. And I said, but you're hearing it's 10%. We're not a community that has wiggle room, so can we figure it out? He's saying that they pushed it up the chain at ODOT and ODOT's required match is 10%. So if that's the case, even with ODOT having to be the certified federal agency that would do it, we could put, submit for the first four blocks with a 10% match, which we have. That would take it, that would not allow, that would not be the SCA funds that I had spoke about we would go for in '27 to be our match. So this would be actual cash out of our pocket that we, councils directed to be put there. A couple of things. There, Gustavo said there are a couple potential risks. Because the projects currently that are the community-directed spending or CDPS. Yeah, something like that. When though, because those are stalled right now, because they haven't passed their budget, the, all of that's kind of stalled. That could mean that we apply for the '26 funding, but '26 turns into '27 or turns into '28 because of the unknowns. So that's one. We would be using all of our cash, not getting the grant for it because the current SCA grant application, as we've mentioned to you guys, is the last of the streets to get all of the city's streets in fair condition. That's the, that's why we're having the street philosophy meeting because after this year, we won't have the same protocol to function on because the streets will be in a fair condition. Now we need to be looking at what's the new mode of operation for staff because we've kind of been in this cycle for a while. So our next SCA grant where we could use it for funding is in '27. The other thing he said is that could also be that the money gets pushed down those days, those years. And because the projects are stalled, that could be enough, have an effect if we went in '26 for ODOT's capacity to be our, our doer, our developer. So he, I told him I would bring these things up to council, and then council could direct me if they still want me to go with the four blocks with the cash match that we have. The last holdout is that they will have to open, open the portal for us because it's closed. And not, and only part of our stuff was submitted at the time. But he said he would, should council want to move forward with the four blocks using their cash, then he would work to open the portal tomorrow because all of my stuff will have to be in there by Friday because they're already doing discussions. So that's the ugly, ugly reality of all the parts that. And so, yeah, I just need to kind of have council mull it over and then kind of say, yes, it's, we're still on that path, go forward, kind of that things.
And I might add, and you talked a little bit about when you started to talk about it, but we'll know more after March 14.
Right.
March 14 is whether they pass the budget or not.
Right.
At the center.
So we're having to make this decision ahead of knowing if they're even going to get their budget passed.
If it passes, and, you know, we get our other information in, it could be good for us next year.
Yeah. So.
Susan.
Go ahead.
How much are you asking for through the SIP?
The project estimate was 1.42.
Okay, so.
2.4. 4.2 or 2.4?
You're looking at the unit quarter. Okay.
But that was the entire project. What we're proposing is that we take everything past C and do that as a separate project. So we would be doing the four already sidewalked blocks, the first four blocks of states.
So what's your ask for them, to them?
Well, that's the thing, we have no, I haven't done the budget because I was in the middle of putting all the half of the project in, but we're proposing it, it could be $800,000.
The reason I'm asking, so I have a lot of experience with this.
Okay.
This process, and I would think a smaller amount is going to be easier to.
Fund.
To fund. As, you know, making sure that it's still as compelling as it would have been for the whole thing.
Yeah.
The other thing is, when I saw you'd made the decision, council made the decision to go with '27 rather than '26, or '26, it's important to do it now because oftentimes you fail the first, sorry.
No, that's what they, no, I was told that, I didn't share it with council, but they said sometimes you ask and then you have to re-go, re-go, yeah.
And, and it doesn't matter whether they pass the budget on the 14th or not because, because this is so far out. We did not find out about our last one until January of this year when we applied.
Okay.
So it's, and, and that's very typical. It, it can be a year before you even hear and you forget about, figure you're not even going to get it. And then they send you a note says if you were right, thinking you weren't going to get. And then they send you a note says, you were right thinking you weren't going to get it, but they've made the decisions because it's great locally we'll get, I mean, I'm sure it'll be on the list.
Yeah.
The problem is it then goes to the national level and everybody gets to put in their two cents worth about your project and it, it, that's where things fall out. And I'm very hopeful that we are successful. So I love the fact that you can do it this year.
Okay.
I, that's my personal opinion is that we.
Well, and then that was the other thing too. So say this is our first ask, we don't get, but they know who we are. Then we go in 27 with a match to do, to pitch the whole project, right? I mean, so we can still pitch half the project and if we get it, great for us. If we don't, then we have, we do the 27 SCA as our match for the whole thing and we do the whole thing as the ask, right? So we're asking for half this time. If we get denied, we would ask for the whole with all of our monies lined up because we'd have the timing to do it.
And I would make sure that you put that in your narrative.
Yeah.
That we are only asking for the half, you know, and why.
Yeah. Good luck. So that's the way council wants to go. Then I'll stick with the money. We've already directed to reserves from the street fund. And I will pitch for the first four blocks and upload the stuff to the portal if they can get it open for me. Yeah.
Yeah. So what was the Darcy Edwards component of that?
Well, so that's a, that's the application I told you about today that I didn't know what, I had to look into that guidance document.
What is it? Is it state funding towards the project?
Well, that's what it looks like.
Yeah.
It's state funds, but I have, I didn't get a chance today to pull the guide document and know, okay, it's coming from this. This is the hiccups they'll ask for. But it could only help if we pitch it and get that match too, you know, depending.
And that was.
I was slicing this meeting until June. But they, they will make a decision even before that. And Sam suggested getting your application ASAP.
This week, yeah. So we can, same, it'll be a lot of the same narrative.
It's a very simple application. It's not very big.
No, it's, it'll just, the budget is the section. Well, it'll kind of mimic is what I'm thinking.
Yeah. So.
I guess the other part too was still ODOT thought we were low on our estimate.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's them with the mobilization and them saying if a third party has to do it, you have to incorporate that fee.
Oh, okay.
And what Gustavo told me about ODOT and this money is that ODOT could have a capacity issue where they push you getting, using this money out, but they can't deny being the person. They're the state agency that does it for all the, all the towns that aren't it, right, are, are not certified. They are the fallback. If, if we can't afford Multnomah County coming out here and mobilizing to do it. And we say, this is all we have money wise, then we may, it may take a while, but ODOT will be our developer. From what he said, they are the agency that's like directed to deal with these funds and do this development.
And because this project would be federally regulated, it would cost more.
Oh, yeah.
And it generally costs more for a project like this in a rural area. And that's the, one of the questions I asked Senator. How are we supposed to afford, I told him about
Match, yeah.
20% match. We're a 2,400 population community and, and we're paying Davis Bacon wages.
Yeah.
Top, getting the top product, but. And.
What's interesting is I think we keep, this is your only federal, federally designated road in Vreonia is State Avenue. And how they see it as a city.
Really?
You don't have any others. The state highway is its own thing. We don't have any others that are deemed federal collector streets except that section of State Avenue. So that's the only reason we can even apply to Merkley. If it wasn't a designated, because we report on it every year, Ben reports on it. We have 0.5 of a mile of federally allocated or designated collector street. And so that's really the only one that these specific funds in the Department of Transportation from a state, state senator could go to. We could go to other, I mean, you could go to HUD or CDBG funds through a senator and get appropriated project funds, but not for streets. This will be the only street. That is, you know.
So is C Street the halfway mark then? Is that?
No, it's the bulk of the work.
Yeah.
Because it's a lot of sidewalk and ramp work because all of those sidewalks just go to a curb.
Sure.
There's no ramp. And so redoing the sidewalks for connectivity for safe routes to schools was an important part of this project. Kind of getting it walk, the walkability of that area is horrible because they're three feet wide sidewalks. And then they go to a curb. See, someone in a wheelchair with disability for walking is not going that route. So it's the bulk of the project is those first four blocks. A lot of grinding of the crown. The crown is way overboard. They just kept paving and paving to the curbs or on the sides are about this tall. So it's going to come way down. One of the things that was interesting that we talked about at our FEMA thing was every, Susan might not have been there, is one, you have to calculate for volumetric like offsets when we're putting in houses in the floodplain. We want to know if we capture the data for what the crown of State Avenue is, can we use it as a volumetric deficit? Because it will no longer exist in the plane. So there's like benefits to doing the project, right, for more than the citizens. There's a lot of things where it could be beneficial. So.
Grind it way down.
Right?
Be nice to have a center lane on there too, one of the projects.
A what?
Center lane line.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I don't do any of them. I don't know if any of them do, other than the highway.
Not that one, but.
I don't think Rose does.
You're on the honor system.
Yeah, stay on your side.
It's kind of crazy sometimes, I'll tell you.
Okay, so that was that. So I guess let's settle. Is that the direction council's wanting me to go? We're in my report, but.
Just a general consensus to move forward. Got my thought.
On the plan that I was already, already motioned?
Yeah.
Yeah, they already motioned. Okay.
I'd like to make one other comment before you finish your report, Josette. That's why these county city dinners are so important. Donald and I haven't raved the weather that one night and gone over there and listened to Gustavo talk about federal funding. This probably wouldn't even be on our
Radar, yeah.
Radar. So those meetings are very important. Thank you.
Yeah. So looks like we're on March investigation. I sent Ian a, Ian, don't leave me hanging about the well. I was like, you said you're coming out February or March. I'm in March. Where are you? So hopefully I'll get an answer back from him. The remaining tasks are still the cabling and anchor, to the anchors. I did meet with one citizen that is certified SCUBA and he is coming up with his bid. And then I did tell him that I had a couple other companies that I had called, but hadn't gotten response back. And then there will need to be some more rock that's located at the approaches of the old docks. And we're working to kind of network maybe Robert Watts to help us with that rock placement. When he's there digging out the intake for the lake pump because he'll already be on site. And then if we can get the rock shuttled over, he can work it in and get those safe for people to use all year. The ADA project, so they've shifted the timeline out. Now they are not anticipated to come here until April, late April. I am sending them a list of all of the festivals so that they can put a plan together of where should we maybe be done first in order to not fall into like doing the ones along Spencer during jamboree would not be good, maybe. But they are slated to be here from April till the end of the year.
Right during jamboree.
All the way to December.
Right. All the festivals.
Yeah.
Because we're such a big town.
Because they have more ramps in the city of Vreonia than almost any other town.
How many, Josette?
I don't know. I'd have to count, but, uh, so that's what I know from ODOT. We're hoping to meet with them before they come out like mid-April. They're gonna come meet all of our staff so they know who to contact when they find conflicts and stuff like that. And then Chris just got a Buku stack of locates for all their ramps. He's like, you have the plans that have all of our infrastructure on it. Why do I have to go locate everything? You're, you're right there. You can see it, but I did give him, he did feel a little bit better when I said they're not coming till mid-April. And he was like, oh, okay. Cause he was kind of freaking out that he needed to turn and burn on a ton of locates right now. Springwood Sewer Project, all the elements have been completed. The backstop was installed in the right position. The chain link's been placed, the trolley at the pump station's been installed, and then the bracket work on the footbridge. Pipe brackets, that's been done. We're now waiting for the final documents. I believe I told you guys that the contractor had a couple items that were not BABA, which is Build America by America. They're supposed to all be BABA. And so we got a finding. We gave it to the contractor to answer for it. If he does not answer for it within a timely amount, then the city will answer for it. And then that just gets put in our file that we had a finding. The result of that will be that our next CDBG we go for, they'll be looking for us to have a work plan for how we're going to make sure the contractor meets the Build America by America. Which if that means we won't sign submittals until we get the certifications that the rebar is domestic or it'll be some written out protocol is what we'll have to do.
Was it steel?
It's any, any, yeah, steel. So rebar, the bridge abutment, the metal and rebar that went into those. And if you can't, most suppliers will not give you a certification unless you ask for that certification at the time of purchase. They, they're unwilling to go back into their records from when you bought it and do back retroactive certification. So he couldn't get the things to prove, even if he did, but what we're thinking is he, we know that he didn't on those two, those items. So it's fine. It's not a huge deal. It's a bummer for us because we've never had a finding and we don't like findings, but it wasn't us that did it. So, I mean, the city staff. So it'll all work out. And then you guys, we just went over the, the request to get that submitted and that's all I've got unless you've got other things for me.
Yeah.
For me?
Not sure.
Okay. Thank you, Josette.
Yep.
Item summary, Mayor, Council, my stuff tonight.
Dale?
Oh. I don't know if Tim's aware. He probably is. One danger tree we had down there by Oviets Cove.
Did it come down?
The windstorm took it out finally. So it's all on the ground. It was one, he cut one leg off. It was a dead alder, but he says, I can't touch that other side.
One with the wood maker hanging up?
Yeah, a hanger in it.
So that's.
And that thing's been there for a few years. I mean, it's spooky.
I know. I walked underneath it many times lately.
Well, it was not going to come on the trail, but anybody walked down there going to the river could have been in harm's way, but they, thankfully it's finally on the ground. Forestry class came out, can't remember last Wednesday.
Yeah.
And we planted about 50, 60 pines. And then I finished off the rest of them, fill in the spots. The 100 pines that we bought are in the ground and tubed up. So we'll see.
Aura.
I did some in Aura. I think I put 22 up in Aura.
How are your trees doing down here?
What's that?
How's, how are the ones doing down here they planted?
The pines sit there. Have, that, that one area underneath the bluff over there where it's got the chipstone, soapstone in there. I think I had a couple, looked like they might've died, but other, and other than that, they had good survival. But it was a good tree growing here last year. I was looking at some of the growth, some of it was over 20 inches on some of those. Yeah, they, they really, and it was weird. We got a little shot of rain late in the summer or something. And the buds sprouted and it grew again a short distance. I don't know. I, I have to talk to somebody, the forester, to know if that's a common thing or not. I always thought they just did one cyclone, formed buds and then went dormant through the winter. But it, it, that shot of moisture we got, I noticed the bud sprouted and it grew another, you know, three, four inches. So I don't know if we're going to have some funny lamb whirls right there because they're going to be close together. We'll see. So that's pretty much it. We'll get the intake dug out. I walked through there today. Evidently the high water was sufficient enough that whirlpool'd in there and drove all the hoses back down in the pit. So I am off to a piece of rebar. So I'll have to go down there and drag them back up out of there because I got to get them out of Robert's way.
Yeah, and they're going to give me some dates when he's available.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you, Dale. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Action item summary.
Well, then I'm going to get my button here and get this application. That's it.
Okay. You all for attending tonight. I'll adjourn this meeting at 7:16 PM. Meeting adjourned.